A commission meeting to order. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Mayor Angel.
Here.
Commissioner Crawford.
Here.
Commissioner Householder.
Here.
Commissioner Jennings.
Here.
Commissioner Shirley.
Here.
If you would all join me for the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the citizens of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first item on the agenda is the Citizens Forum. If there's anyone here from the public wishing to speak on anything not on today's agenda, come on up to the podium. Are you coming, Jim?
No.
Okay.
I was being facetious when I made that earlier.
We'll move on to awards and proclamations.
Oh, sorry, Chief Phillips.
Go right ahead.
Mayor Commissioners, I have before me a personally signed copy from Governor Brownback of Senate Substitute for House Bill 2049, which was signed into law by the governor on May 18th, 2010. You probably saw the newspaper article yesterday in Hutchinson. Senate Substitute for House Bill 2049 regulates street drugs, commonly referred to as potpourri and basalts. When he signed it, he signed it with the emergency clause, meaning that it went into effect immediately upon publication in the Kansas Register. It was published May 26th, and on June 1st, the I-135, I-70 Drug Task Force served the first search warrant pursuant to the law on a known crack cocaine dealer and seized quantities of synthetic cannabinoids, commonly referred to as potpourri pursuant to the House Bill. We owe a real great debt of gratitude to the Kansas Legislature and our own local legislators, especially Representative Charlie Roth and Senator Pete Brungard, who championed this legislation. I want to personally thank forensic chemist Jeremy Morris of the Johnson County Sheriff's Office Crime Lab, who has been of great help to us relative to this, and all Kansas law enforcement who worked at a fever pitch to get this legislation passed, especially our own Drug Task Force Commander Lieutenant Jim Norton. I also want to publicly thank Dr. Kyra Swisher, co-director of Solana Regional's Emergency Department. Dr. Swisher has personally observed the human toll that these drugs take on our citizens. We've had one death last year, we had several near deaths, and we filled the emergency room with people that ingested these dangerous street drugs. In April, there was a death in Hutchinson, and right now, we're awaiting toxicology results to see if we had another death related to these drugs in Salina County. So the fight is not over, but we definitely have the tools now to address it. As you may recall, I testified before the House and Senate Committees that these dangerous drugs, described as, actually disguised as potpourri and basalts, which they are not, posed the gravest threat to our community's health, safety, and welfare that I have encountered during my tenure as police chief. House Bill 2049 will make our community and our state much safer. The manufacturers, distributors, and dealers of this poison will now face the constant threat of arrest and prosecution here and across the state of Kansas, and we are going to make arrests as fast as we can get laboratory results back analyzing these drugs and telling us that they are Schedule I banned drugs. But a great thing for our city, this legislation, I can't think of any legislation that's passed this session that makes our city safer than this specific legislation.
Thank you, Chief, and I echo your sentiments to say thank you to all those folks that have worked so hard, but really, I think we need to say thank you to you for all of your efforts in getting this passed and making sure that those substances are off the streets. So, thank you.
Thank you. It was a team effort.
We'll move on to awards and proclamations.
Item 4.1, Resolution Number 116826, expressing gratitude and appreciation to James A. Meyer for his employment with the City of Salina from October 26, 1980 to June 15, 2001. Item 4.2, Resolution Number 116827, expressing gratitude and appreciation to Charles M. Donmeyer for his employment with the City of Salina from December 10, 1979 to June 15, 2011. Item 4.3, Resolution Number 116828, expressing gratitude and appreciation to Irvin Augustine for his employment with the City of Salina from February 18, 1979 to June 15, 2011. Item 4.4, Resolution Number 116829, expressing gratitude and appreciation to Thomas D. Forstall for his employment with the City of Salina from May 24, 1977 to June 13, 2011.
Do we have a motion approving all four resolutions?
So moved, Mayor.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve Resolution 116826, 116827, 116828, and 116829. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. And I think Mr. Donmeyer is the only one here, is that right? Where are you? Are you here?
Yeah, he is, yeah.
You know what that means, you get everyone else's time to talk.
I think I'm talking to a dog.
We have a plaque for you that kind of expresses the resolution of our gratitude and appreciation for all your time that you've dedicated to the city and the citizens. And so I think everyone gets three minutes, so you get like 12 minutes if you want to.
I don't need near 12 minutes. It's been a good run. I enjoyed every minute of it, and it's just been a pleasure. I really learned a lot, and I don't know what to say. It's been a great job, and I'm happy I'm still here.
And now you retire to some time for summer vacation.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Item 4.5, the month of May 2011, as National Foster Care Month in the City of Salina. Dan Milford will read the proclamation.
Come on up, Dan.
It's actually David Milford.
Come on up, David. Sorry.
You can call me what you want. All right. Whereas there are approximately 496,000 American children and youth in foster care, and nearly half of the young people in foster care are over the age of 10, and whereas there are more than 5,000 children in the state of Kansas, most placed temporarily due to parental abuse and neglect, or whereas there is an urgent need for foster families to care for teenagers, special needs, and sibling groups, and whereas the City of Salina shows appreciation to all foster parents for their selflessness and their dedication to helping children in need, now therefore be resolved that Samantha P. Angel, Mayor of the City of Salina, Kansas, does hereby proclaim May 2011 as National Foster Care Month in Salina and call upon all citizens, community agencies, religious organizations, medical facilities, and businesses to increase their participation in efforts to bring awareness to foster care and the need for foster parents.
Are there any events planned for the month?
Not this month. We will be having an informational meeting at the Public Library. It's still to be scheduled. I'm guessing it'll be next month, in which we do advertise that in the paper. We do ask that, we'd like to get churches involved passing out bulletins in their Sunday services, so the more churches that we have involved, the better. But our main referral source is our other foster parents. So just reaching out into communities through those churches and other organizations and businesses is just going to be able to get these kids into more homes.
Okay, thank you. Come on up, I have your proclamation for you.
Item 4.6, the week of June 6 through the 12, 2011, as the Smoky Hill River Festival Week in the City of Salina. Gail McMillan, Arts and Humanities Commission Chair, will read the proclamation.
Go right ahead.
Thank you. This is a proclamation of the City of Salina, Kansas. Whereas the Smoky Hill River Festival is a project of the Salina Arts and Humanities, growing from the mandate to take the arts to the people, whereas the festival celebrates the arts and this community through a festival happening is accessible to anyone physically, psychologically, and economically, whereas the festival heightens community awareness of and appreciation for the arts, whereas the festival provides a forum for the community to come together, to participate actively in many different ways, whereas the festival has developed a broad base of community support through volunteerism and financial underwriting, whereas the festival provides a way for the community to become aware of its own potential as a whole, thereby developing pride and resourcefulness, whereas the festival brings many people to Salina to join in the celebration, thereby enhancing the image of the community and the reality of the strong linkage between the arts and economic development, whereas the festival establishes the Arts and Humanities Department as a viable, essential part of community growth and development, whereas the week of June 6 through the 12 is celebrated as the 35th anniversary of the Smoky Hill River Festival. So now therefore be proclaimed by Samantha P. Angel, Mayor of the City of Salina, that the week of June 6 is to be observed as Smoky Hill River Festival Week. In the City of Salina and all residents of our community are urged personally to attend the festival and celebrate the spirit of creativity and artistry evident there in the manner they so choose. In witness whereof, I here to set my hand and cause a seal of Salina, Kansas, to be affixed this 6th day of June 2011, Samantha P. Angel, Mayor of the City of Salina.
So there are a few things planned for the week of June 6?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, we got a lot of stuff. There are some pre-festival activities going on. The Taiko Drum Ensemble, that has a Japanese-style thing, is going to be doing a clinic at Central High School at 2:00 on Thursday afternoon. The FEMA Clay Workshop is going to be on the pot. It took reservations and they filled up, so it's a little late to get in there now, but that's going to be a neat thing going on. The festival, general festival calendar, it starts at 6:00 on Thursday evening with the festival jam, and food vendors will be there. And then Friday and Saturday, it's open from 10:00 to 10:00 in the morning until 10:00 at night, and with arts, with the craft things, and with music, and with food going on, on all that on Friday and Saturday and Sunday. Sunday, the hours are from 10:00 in the morning to 5:00 in the afternoon. And then the fine arts are going to be happening on Saturday and Sunday.
And who designed the shirts this year?
Oh, Kurt Krab.
Oh, good.
Yeah. And I decided I'd wear my uniform for the weekend today, so it's neat.
Okay, I have your proclamation signed.
All right, thank you.
We'll move on to public hearings and items scheduled for a certain time.
Item 5.1, Public Hearing on Resolution Number 116830, providing for the repair and removal of a dangerous structure located at 509 South 11th Street.
We will open the public hearing and hear from Mr. Hobby.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor and Commissioners, you have before you a request for a public hearing today to receive input from the general public for a house located at 509 South 11th Street here in Salina. On February 13th, there was a fire, and the city staff was notified of that fire, and city staff has gone through the various procedures required by state statutes and city ordinances to make sure the property has been either repaired or brought back into service. In this case, the property has not been repaired, it has not been given any timeframe of any remodeling or any additions that will be fixing the house, have been brought to Building Services Department, so we've asked that you set a date as of today to hear a public hearing on whether or not the structure should be condemned or not. To date, as of this last Thursday, Mr. Ron Michelson, our building inspector from the City of Salina, toured the house one more time to confirm that there has been no work completed on the property since we went through the original resolutions setting this date today. Today would set a date of July, excuse me, July 21st, as a final date for us to make sure the property has been removed or completely remodeled, or our process has been started in that direction, and if not, then at that point, then we will proceed with the condemnation of the property and demolition of that property. The city has received financial reimbursement from the state, from the Fire Insurance Proceeds Fund for this property in the amount of a little over $10,000, which would be used and is being held in escrow to pay for any demolition to the property. Our last house we demolished was more than a $10,000 price tag, so if there is any expenses over and above the $10,000, they would come out of our demolition fund, and we would still assess the property for any damages in the process. But this is a public hearing to hear from those of neighbors, as well as the owners of the property, and their request for the house to be not condemned and removed. Mr. Michelson is in the audience today with me, and he'd be more than glad to answer any questions concerning the property.
Thank you. How's notice sent out if we approve this today? Is it sent certified mailed, or how do you give notice to the?
Again, it will be sent through certified mailings to the property owner and any lenders that would be involved in the property itself. That July 12th will be our date to start condemnation proceedings. We will then go to bid, bring that bid process back to you for your approval for the final expenditures.
Any questions for staff? Is there anyone here from the public that wants to comment on this? Seeing none, I'll bring this back to the commission for action.
Mayor, I'd make a motion that we approve Resolution 116830, directing the owners to repair or demolish the structure at 509 South 11th by June 21st, 2011, and authorizing staff to proceed with demolition or repair in the event that the owner does not comply.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve Resolution 11-6830. Is there any further discussion or debate?
Madam Mayor, as a clarification, it's July 21st rather than June 21st.
Thank you.
As it says on there.
My second still stands. I'll still second that. June 21st, July 21st, it doesn't matter.
Any other discussion or debate? Seeing none, we'll bring it back for a vote. All in favor of approving the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes 5-0. We'll close the public hearing and move on to the consent agenda.
Item 6.1, approve the minutes of May 23, 2011. Item 6.2, Resolution Number 116831, appointing Zach Blumquist to the Arts and Humanities Commission and Tate Harrington to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board as youth members. Item 6.3, Resolution Number 116832, appointing Glenda Newell to the Convention and Tourism Committee, Maxwell Brooks to the Planning Commission, and Stephanie Carlin to the Salina Economic Development Ascendus Council. Item 6.4, approve change order number 1 for the sanitary sewer reconstruction project number 102847 with Stevens Contractors LLC in the amount of $28,136. Item 6.5, authorize the replacement of the water treatment plant administration building HVAC control system, project number 112883, to Calabrese Heating and Cooling in the amount of $10,459. Item 6.6, authorize the purchase of six meters at the water treatment plant filter building from RE Pedotry Company Incorporated in the amount of $15,158. Item 6.7, authorize the supplemental applications for amendment to existing water rights for the downtown Willfield.
Six what? Turb, how is it?
Turbometers.
Turbometers. Is there any item on the consent agenda Commissioner has questions about or was pulled from the consent agenda?
Just what that word means. I'm sure Martha knows, yeah.
Mayor, I move we approve the consent agenda. Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the consent agenda as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes 5-0. We are on to development business.
Item 7.1, Application Number Z0718B, requesting a change in zoning district classification from R3 to PC3 district, and approval of amended site plan on property addresses 307 South 7th Street. Sub item 7.1A, First Reading Ordinance Number 1110606.
Mr. Andrew.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Commissioners, the subject of this application is a vacant lot that's located on the east side of 7th Street, north of the Masonic Temple, and if you go back to the late 1960s, Santa Fe Avenue was predominantly a residential street, but a number of apartment houses and other homes were demolished, and in 1973, a permit was issued for a Sonic Drive-In Restaurant, which is exactly as shown in that picture, so that particular plan dates to 1973. In 1997, they had acquired this house here, which still shows up in this picture, and they deepened their zoning to provide additional employee parking and space for some storage buildings, but the house at 313 South 7th remained intact. In 2005, they applied to demolish that home, and in 2007, late 2007, they came forward with a plan to rezone two lots on 7th Street, this one and this one, in order to create a larger campus for a new and expanded Sonic Drive-In. And the rezoning for that and a plan for that was approved by the City Commission in late 2007, and a final plan for that was approved by the Planning Commission in 2008. As a part of that, if you could go back to that or to this, John, that's fine, there was a plat done of the property in 2008, and what the situation they had was that this was a platted alley, and it contains a sanitary sewer, and that sanitary sewer serves the Masonic Temple, so they couldn't very well abandon it. So what occurred was the City Commission agreed to vacate the alley, retain an easement, and allow Sonic to build over the top of that existing sanitary sewer line with some protections. So the result of that is that Sonic Drive-In had a single contiguous lot with this being Santa Fe and this being 7th Street, and had that whole 25,000 square feet to work with. That was all approved by the end of 2008. In 2009, a building permit application was processed, but no work was ever initiated under that permit, and it expired. Then in the spring of this year, a new permit came in, and it was issued on April 25th, and if you drive by there, you can see that site work and construction is underway under that permit. But subsequent to that, Sonic Drive-In reached an arrangement with the Salina Regional Health Center to acquire a lot on 7th Street, which is what you see depicted in this picture here, and it's just a 40 by 120-foot lot, but it does make a difference for them because they do have a pretty narrow and congested site as far as, for trash enclosures, storage buildings, and as well as parking and circulation. So this application is before you is to change the zoning of this lot that formerly had a house on it to residential, and also to approve the incorporation of this plan into the Sonic overall site plan. And you do not have this particular drawing in your packet, but the approved plan currently stops right here, and this is the amended plan, and so that would add nine additional parking spaces, provide a place for a trash enclosure and storage building, and would grow their site to 29,800 square feet. So the primary difference is it allows them to get their storage building and trash enclosure off their existing site to provide nine additional parking spaces for employees and incorporate that into the site. Planning Commission conducted a public hearing on this on May 17th, and they voted to recommend approval of both the zoning change and the amended plan, with the condition that this trash enclosure here be shifted back to the east to keep it 25 feet from 7th Street in order to conform with setback requirements. So this comes to you with a recommendation of approval from the Planning Commission, and if you agree that the residential zoning no longer serves its original purposes for this lot, you should vote to approve ordinance number 1110606 on first reading. With that, I'd be open to any questions you have. We do have Denny Powell of Sonic here, if you have any questions of him.
Any questions for Mr. Andrew?
Where does that sanitary sewer run, on that plan there?
It runs right through here. So it runs, coming from Mulberry goes through here, there's a sleeved reinforced area here, and then it goes on to the south and connects to the Masonic Temple. So as we understood the plan, they're going to try to keep the existing restaurant open as long as possible, and then demolish it when the new one's ready.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thanks. Is there any public comment? Seeing none, I'll bring it to the commission for action.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve this application, Z07-18B, and ordinance number 1110606, approving the action before us.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that we adopt ordinance 11-10606. Is there any further discussion or debate? Seeing none, we'll bring it to a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes 5-0. We're on to administration.
Item 8.1, First Reading Ordinance Number 1110605, unconditionally approving the issuance of general obligation bonds by the Salina Airport Authority for the purpose of financing the cost of certain capital improvements located at the Salina Airport Industrial Center and the Salina Municipal Airport.
Mr. Bangston.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioners, the Salina Airport Authority was established in 1965 pursuant to Kansas enabling legislation enacted that same year. One of the powers given the authority under that statute is the issuance of their own general obligation bonds, subject however to approval by the City Commission. The matter before you today is an example of that interrelationship. On May 8th, 2011, the Board of Directors of the Authority adopted a resolution approving the issuance of general obligation bonds in a principal amount not to exceed $1,539,000, excluding the cost of issuance. The projects that are intended for the use of those funds are itemized there in your memo. They include the Taxi UAG and H959 Apron, that's an economic development matching funds component to match the Kansas Department of Transportation T-Works grant of $1.44 million. That expenditure involves $519,000 in order to receive that grant. The ARF station, again, a match situation for a public safety project with the Federal Aviation Administration, that expenditure of $804,000 in bond proceeds results in the benefit of a grant of $1.9 million. Also, utilities and west Beechcraft Road improvements associated with the ARF station construction, that's a public safety project necessary for that ARF station construction involving expenditures of bond proceeds of $100,000. And finally, the Vortex Avenue Water Main relocation, that's an economic development project necessary to enhance the marketability of remaining industrial development property. And with those four components, you have the total of $1,539,000. This bond issue will be addressed by Bond Counsel Gilmore &amp; Bell, who also serves as the city's bond counsel. The financial advisor on the project is-
This is a tornado warning. Please seek safety in the designated shelter areas.
Please seek safety in the designated shelter areas.
I think that's-
Are we okay in here? Do you need to go down?
It's not a scheduled.
This is a tornado warning. Please seek safety in the designated shelter area.
Motion to re, temporary recess or what is it?
Until after the-
Yeah.
I make a motion that we temporarily suspend the meeting until such time as all clear is given.
Second.
We'll reconvene after the tornado warning expires.
Yeah, the shelter area is downstairs.
Well, that'll add some interesting moments to, minutes to the meeting. The meeting was suspended for tornado.
Make a motion that that be adopted.
That be adopted, we adopt that, yeah.
Okay, we'll reconvene after that little break. We were on item 8.1. Mr. Bankston, were you finished or were you still?
I was about two sentences away. I assure you. The, probably one of the more significant points, the, the general obligation bonds are certainly backed by the full faith and credit of the Salina Airport Authority, but they are not an obligation of the city. And also to let you know that Executive Director Tim Rogers and Director of Administration and Finance Shelley Swanson are here to answer the harder questions.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Bankston or Mr. Rogers, Ms. Swanson? No? Any public comment? Seeing none, I'll bring it to the commission for action.
Mayor, I'd move that we approve Ordinance Number 11-10605, unconditionally approving the issuance of general obligation bonds by the Salina Airport Authority for the purpose of financing the cost of certain capital improvements located at the Salina Airport Industrial Center and the Salina Municipal Airport. I think I should probably add in the value of $1,539,000.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that we adopt Ordinance 11-10605. Is there, is there any further discussion or debate? Seeing none, I'll bring it to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes 5-0.
Item 8.2, Consider Supplemental Agreement Number 1 for the Design of Phase 1 Downtown Wellfield Improvements, Project Number 102840.
Ms. Tasker.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. In February of 2010, the City Commission accepted the raw water supply study as prepared by HDR and their subconsultants. The purpose of this study was to evaluate the use of the city's existing water supply sources, being the Smoky Hill River, the downtown wellfield, and the south wellfield, and to identify and evaluate sustainable alternatives that would carry us through the next 50 years. This study identified a capital improvement program which had five phases with improvements that would span over the next 50 years. In August of 2011, the City Commission authorized HDR to proceed with the design of the Phase 1 Downtown Wellfield Improvements, which included increasing the supply capacity of the downtown wellfield from 10 million gallons a day to 13 million gallons a day during drought conditions. To accomplish this, the plan proposed redrilling four of the 15 wells in the downtown wellfield, replacing approximately 4,900 feet of raw water supply line that was undersized, and retrofitting the existing airstripper facilities at the existing water treatment plant to increase their capacity from 10 million gallons a day to 15 million gallons a day. The engineering agreement required that HDR complete a preliminary design report and that that report would identify and outline the criteria for the remainder of the project. It's really the roadmap to finish the project. And basically, the design report for this project is three quarters to an inch thick. So it's a very, very detailed report. And typically, that's done at roughly the 30% design area, which allows the staff and state regulators to review that and determine that it meets our design requirements and all regulatory requirements and our expectation. It also allows us to look at the different components from a constructibility standpoint. Can we actually build what we thought we could? In this case, that might be the improvements to the airstripper. Can we get the capacity increase that we want with, inside the existing buildings, with the existing piping? And we also look to see, are there any components that are somewhat costly to construct? Is there a better way to do things? Once we get through that, then basically, we provided our consultant with the roadmap to complete the design. Basically, on this project, once we got the preliminary design report done, we realized that a section of pipe that we had proposed to run down the alley between Mulberry, being up here, and South Street, and this being the water treatment plant, basically, this pipe was running straight north. That was the route that we selected in the beginning. Once we got that surveyed, we decided that maybe wasn't the best route. And so we started investigating possibly coming down the west side of 4th Street. Could you go to the other slide, John? And basically, this is the 30%, 40% design drawing that we received from HDR. And I'm just going to point out some highlights. What we found when we got the survey done and all the information that this alley was roughly 10 feet wide and a part of it was concrete and part of it was sand and gravel. Also, there's an existing building that sits right on the west side of, of this right-of-way. The overhead power, which we could see, ran down along the west side. Then it split and ran along the west side and along the east side. And in the center of that was a sanitary sewer. And then on the east side of the alley was a telephone cable. We actually thought that the alley was wider than it was when we finally got the survey and the research done. What we found to try to construct down this line was basically, our new line would have a lot of offsets in it and we also would get out of the existing right-of-way and into others' property. This area happens to be asphalt pavement. So we started looking for the other alternatives. And basically, what we came up, working with our consultant, that to travel down this alley would probably have roughly an additional $45,000 cost over trying to go down the west side of 4th Street, which is virtually a straight shot. And we could actually bore that pipe in place, which helps save some of the trees and the sidewalk above, and less costly. Originally, we didn't go down 4th Street because of the railroad and some dimensions. But once we confirmed all of those numbers with the railroad, we feel we have a good location there. And the additional cost to redesign and resurvey the west side of 4th Street is roughly $6,000. So we feel that's a pretty good trade-off compared to the additional construction cost and the need of additional right-of-way. And basically, this supplemental agreement increases the original agreement estimated fee from $179,900 to a revised fee of $185,900, which is a number that cannot be exceeded without City Commission approval. And that's why I'm here today with this, because the previous agreement made that same statement. In addition, this supplemental agreement revises the completion of 100% bid-ready plans and specifications from March 15th to August 15th. This is roughly a five-month extension. And I tried to put it into, this item was two weeks, three weeks, but I just couldn't get there. It was kind of a combination of everything. We wanted to do the test drilling and two of our wells were in the park. And it was wet, so we didn't want to cut ruts getting the test drill in there. So we waited on that. Then we got our survey lined out, then it snowed. And it just seemed like everything dominoed. And then, when it came to us to review this small report, we're supposed to turn it around in two weeks. I'd like to say we did, but we didn't because we were busy on some other projects. So basically, this five-months extension is what we feel we need to finish the 100% drawings and, and do a good job for the project. We also spent extra time looking at the route. Currently, we have one pipe that brings the water into the water plant. It's under the river channel and through the railroad tracks. That concerned us as we looked at it. So this new route gives us a second tie-in to the plant and some redundancy. So we made improvements through the course of it, but, but it did take us time to get to that point. A budget allocation of $180,000 for the downtown wellfield improvements was included in the 2010 capital improvements program under system enhancements. The additional funds of the $5,900 for this supplemental agreement are available in our reserve funds, which Rod told you about earlier today. Staff recommends that the City Commission authorize the mayor to enter into supplemental agreement number 1 with HDR Engineering Incorporated of Kansas City, Kansas, for the design of Phase 1 Downtown Wellfield Improvements, excuse me, Project Number 102840, in amount not to exceed of $6,000, which would revise the original agreement to $185,900. I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions? Thank you. Is there any public comment? Seeing none, I'll bring it to the commission for action.
Mayor, I'd make a motion that we approve supplemental agreement number 1 for the Design Phase 1 Services in the Downtown Well Project, Number 10-2840, with HDR Engineering in the amount of six, not to exceed $6,000, for a total new price of the project of $185,900.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the city enter into supplemental agreement number 1 with HDR Engineering for the Design Phase 1 Project 10-2840, in amount not to exceed $6,000. Is there any further discussion or debate? Seeing none, I'll bring it to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes 5-0. Is there any other business? I just want to say thanks to the Boy Scouts for coming. We might not have gotten into a big heated debate, but you did get to see the fake tornado drill, so. That's something that doesn't happen every week.
We could debate whether to adjourn or not for their behalf.
I doubt it.
But I'll, I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded that we adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. We're adjourned.